Public hearing to order. Or do you want to please over this one or some later?
Here, Mr. President. I'm Mr. President of the C O S E. Tonight, we are conducting a 1028 project hearing and additional appropriation hearings for general obligation bodies that come forth the board to distract from those grand so tail. Tonight, we do have Thomas Peterson and Amanda Schumacher. If there are any questions from the public, they will be happy to entertain. So we are here to answer those questions if there are any. Hearing, Mr. President, it is my recommendation this hearing has been concluded.
Perfect. But sure. Any motion for?
Move to adjourn.
Second. Any questions coming? All in favor, say by saying aye. Opposed, abstain. Perfect. Now we will move on to the regular board meeting. Ms. Markowski, if you have noted, all board members are present and counted for. And if you'll please say with your leg.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good, thank you very much. We have the middle board salute. And board, do I have a motion for the approval of the agenda?
Mr. President, I do approve the agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Paul. Second, thank you, Ms. Perkins. Any questions or comments? All in favor, signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
Opposed, abstain. The next would be the executive session, regular meeting minutes approval. I move we approve those. Can I please have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Hyterson. Any questions or comments? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstain. Now we are looking for comments. I do not believe we have any. And so we will move to major funds monitoring reports. Excitement at Hillsbury.
I'm so excited to know I can say myself.
No, it is actually.
And the last one was revenue too.
Ah, Tessie, huh? You think it's just me?
Wait, I said.
This whole place is like that. See, brought in people. They're standing for all in. We did a reading to decide if they got to hear about this budget.
I don't know, there are a few new schemes in our projects in schools yourself.
There we are.
Mr. President, I am going to go over your major fund report, five funds that we affect our budget over. Just kind of let you know our status. For the end of September, we have an imbalance in the education fund line. Over to the number, we still in education fund, the money to transfer operations before it runs out. But compared to last year, that still contains a pre T A W. We are under two million cash in hand. However, in any country with T A W, you always have to pay for operations that involve any transactional operation. So in our eyes, this district is doing quite well in our education. Junior Operations Fund, which is a tax related fund, you will end up with 280,000, just as we had in the special first six months of the year. I do call it one, and also give you the true comfort that it is not under the same that this goes into the bread. And we do close months give the bread because the revenue that comes for this was not received into that fund until June. And to settle because you receive your property tax bills in May and November, that's what we do. So that goes through this process and it's sent out to all your taxes. Because you have made that goal of having cash in hand in your fund operation within the district, we can handle that goal. If it ever gets to be where it's too much to be handled, then I will come to the board and have a project to call them. So that first six months, we should be able to spend. Finally, your debt service and future debt service are. If you are seeing the changes in that, we can be processing people in the trust day to day. Hammering to those kind of things. And then the rainy day wants to do the note that we may receive our money back. That's why we'll just see the fund, the bunch of money back up. Any questions, we have to answer at least five major funds, which will be on the topic where we're on in such a war. Hearing, Mr. President, may I move on to the treasurer's fund cash balance report?
Please.
And as you know, this is also September 30th. All your funds are there. The ones that are in red are generally your reimbursements. We've got our very nice 30 day schedule of getting those reimbursements. They're on our grant, but generally where you're at. I do want to point out a couple of areas. We want to look at fund posted 233 construction, 2324. So that is that's the process that our obligation. That money will come in. Part of that project was a reimbursement for some purchases, which is what we're entitled to do. So that will be handled and taken care of for you. The others that are in red are reimbursed for grants. The other section that I will continue to remind is that if you look at the school lunch fund, which right now contains 2.1 million dollars, remember, we're only entitled to keep three months worth of expenses. We've had a couple of unusual years of how that cash flow goes through. And we will be beginning next year, next calendar year, to talk about reports that would come in through the food service line. And we'll show those three months and we'll show that average. And we'll do a 12 month rolling on that. So you would know how much we'd be able to reinvest into the capture of. We do have projects that are going on and we are increasing building size by adding classrooms. So we are high interest rate. Updating our packages to handle. We also have equipment that we need to start replacing. So there's plenty of opportunity to reinvest our kids in our program. Finally, our self insurance fund, we're at 1.3 million dollars. We need to have about a $3 million cash balance in there. We have come to the board to our lead in together and explain how we're going to start accomplishing that. And so, you know, great recommendations are coming forward this time of year. So we will be handling that, be close to channel those courses this next year, just like anything else in practices that goes up again. So that will be able to accommodate that. I will entertain any questions on this report if there are any. Hearing, Mr. President, if I may move on to the monitoring report?
Absolutely.
As you can see, our 2016 bond report for 5 2016 now is at zero. We had a little bit interesting as transfers and other. We'll be working on our trustee and those increase that comes out. And that soon will be really out of the support. So that was, you think back, you see all of those schools were affected by that. And so we were able to complete the bond on those. So soon that will drop off. I will probably begin with maybe next month, I think. They need arrangement to come down with our work food. 2017 bond, we have 159,000 there. We do have some things that we are taking care of at these locations. There's some emergencies, I try to do that. But we do have some things that we may want to do at her valley to try to take care of some of that needs there as well. Franklin Square, the principal gym is through tonight are on deck for a meeting. There's some storage items we can kind of visualize between the gym and the school building. We need some storage for P E equipment. You know, there's some technology that you have on some enhancements on. So the item basically has had a chance to kind of evaluate that, which is our following. And now we're ready to get that. So we'll be taking care of a lot of that with the money there. The 2019, we are waiting for our final as builds and final billing for transportation. We can handle quickly. Matter of fact, I got a deal this afternoon, I haven't really agreed, but we should be on pretty soon closing that. The 2020 bond, we are on our financial savings contract and we'll be discussing the well and ready of the classroom and discussing what we have on the agenda. This will be handled within the next year. The 20 classroom additions in Washington, paving, you know, we clearly got district. We've listed paving was done and handled. So we're checking off everything on these projects. Tennis courts are right on schedule. Riverside, we started on and even we are finishing up for all of this that we need to do. That scope to get the title right, one point to begin. So maybe we need to disrupt that school girl's operation as least as possible and try to fit in a lot of some. So that's still ongoing. And then our 22 new elementary is inviting or inviting being completed. Probably receiving throughout the district. Where those are going in a lot of compliments from Washington. Thank Brian, Brian, you heard a few things on that. And then of course, Jamie and Mark, Jamie, I think, and Mark, you're working diligently on new elementary. As a matter of fact, we'll be coming to you about this subject around the agenda. And you'll proceed nicely on that area. So if there's any questions about handbears, I didn't entertain that.
I just wanted to have to say out loud, the tennis courts are all on schedule and there's no reduction production in that project scope.
Correct.
Exactly. That was just something that was flying around out there, so I want to make that clear. Thank you.
We have the athletic director and his coaches, that will hopefully on that project, we do need to work. And then you rule over all of the things that are occurring on the property, what to expect that's going to happen on the property and what, what, you know, executive materials are. So it's very clear and our, our coaches, retired coaches, athletic director are very, very pleased and have been very helpful, you know, describing these and what's, and of course, the team behind it is, is coming back as well. So yes, we're on schedule. I mean, we have seen now that's clarification. And where I come from, this before Halloween, we ran a long one. So what we're doing great work here is that we don't have that down here that much. So because we do need that time to continue to proceed on. The tennis courts will be fully completed. But because of how the electrical runs through that whole process, we need to have the building done. So that's what we're afraid for is whether to get that building and saw that electrical going on. And that's right on schedule. I love it. Hope you guys can't just go, you know, get five years' gone down here. Any questions?
Board? Nope. Thank you so much.
Fantastic, thank you.
Appreciate it. Next item would be the consent agenda. President, do I have a motion to do for that?
I don't have any further issues.
Thank you, Ms. Hope. Second, thank you, Mr. Paul. Any questions or comments about that? Everybody good, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed and abstaining. Fair Katrina, should be coming up due to the use of the building if you're.
Absolutely.
Thank you so much.
Super exciting. A lot of things going on today. She's the personal discretion, there's our Kroger, over Cola gifts. And look at that, J Light Architecture Design, you did 9,500 in Washington Athletic Facility Branding Development and another 13,000 for the United Museum Branding Concepts for local elementary school. And that is incredible. Comfort Air Solutions Heating there, 3,000 for purchasing basketball uniforms, which I'm sure those get old very quickly because I feel like we just bought those. But you know what? They get used a lot. So I move that there's two more curators left on there. If you have not signed, I've recovered for us to do that. I move that we accept these gifts to building in the total of 27,863 dollars.
Wow.
Yeah. I will say today.
Thank you for the first one, for the second. Thank you, Jamie. Thank you, and you can hear later. All right, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed and abstain. The next week, we're running back into Dr. Herbage and Mandant Income Consulting Services. Good to see you.
I feel like I've seen you forever.
She was sitting right here.
Well, hello, board, welcome back to the law first. Nice to see you. Amanda Holback is an artist who works for group full time and a freelance artist in her spare time. Her work has been seen in festivals throughout the United States. And Amanda will be representing eight sketching workshops with our high goalie students. These workshops will be scheduled between November 1st and March 1st, 2023, and March 14th and 15th. Students will work with Amanda to begin sculptures and they will follow that with sketches and writing. And these will be digitized by the Jeffersonville Art Administrator for a temporary outdoor public agency at no code. The total cost for these workshops will be 1,060 dollars and will be paid for with high ability grant funds.
True. Board, I move we approve the Amanda Hancock Consulting Services Agreement. Do I have a second? Thank you, Mr. Freeman. Do I have any comments or concerns?
I have a mathematical thing.
Nice.
Go ahead.
I live to a math person.
Here we are.
Real show. Okay.
Okay, so your workshops are 485 dollars per workshop. Is that right?
I will have to verify that with this plan.
Okay. First for eight workshops and then 575 per workshop for two, which I. It's more than 1,060.
Well, it might be, I'll have to see how she count it up to eight. Those may be within, not eight separate ones, but there might be within a day. She may have included that as like different age groups, you know what I'm saying?
Yes, yes.
I'll have to verify that with her. Because I do not know, but I can check on that. But I bet you that they have a certain number of workshops that it might be within one day. And that's why.
Okay, that's right. So just mathically, just.
I am willing to bet that 1,060 is correct, but I bet the way it was she counted enough. And I'll have to verify that with her.
That's true.
I call it.
Oh, okay. It's on, on a digital display. Are they even on those poster sized things out on that building or?
I think so.
Yeah, I think that's like. Yeah, really great.
So it's exciting to be a part of that community wide project. So, but I can check on the, on the math of those. But I bet that those are like so many within a day.
Okay.
Any other questions? Okay, all those in favor of the Amanda Hancock Consulting Service Agreement, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed or abstaining? All right, moving right along. Dr. Hartley?
Okay, this is for, as you know, you've heard a lot of talk about the Orton Building Ham system for supporting community awareness and early literacy skills. And the whole dyslexia grant legislation is revolving around this. And so we are required by law to do a universal screener on our K1 and 2 students and follow that up with a level 1 screener. And any student that is fly on those, and all students have to do it. There are no exceptions or waivers or special ed or ELL students. We have to by law provide an Orton Building Ham tier 2 or 3 intervention to those students. So as we have been building capacity with our teacher groups, we've been using Esther funds. We have our grant partnership with Marion. We have over 100 general ed teachers now trained with Orton Building Ham skills, which is a highly specialized program to help support early literacy. And, and it works. I mean, it just, it does. And so now there's a big emphasis to work with higher education to make sure students come out polished with those skills. But we, as we continue to work on our school improvement efforts and we look at our targeted schools who are within that criteria because of our special ed subgroup. We are being very intentional. We've come up with a plan and this is part of our plan. Our hope is for every special ed teacher and ELL teacher, this is a week long training. It will take place the week before Christmas. They will come on site. They will provide all of the training for our teachers as well as every supply and material they need to implement in the classroom. So we're very excited about this and all of it will be paid for with grant funds.
Awesome. Board, I move we approve the 113 education board, we Building Ham Agreement. Please have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Patrick. Do we have any questions or comments for Dr. Hartley? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstain. Okay, our next item, permission to advertise for the C M C Construction Manager for new elementary school projects. Good to see you.
Good to see you. I may have the rest of the night.
There we go.
Here we go. So that are through by.
Oh, I'm telling you.
And this is very exciting. So I'm going to be very excited. This is about two new elementary that are being discussed in bottom block. And so, you know, we're ready to rock and roll now. Okay, so I'm coming to you tonight because we are asking permission to advertise for the C M C to bid on managing these projects. And we recall, and that is called the Construction Manager as Contractor, which is currently how we are operating. Our classroom manager of tennis courts, New Washington, and of course, is the one that is handling the backs. We did it all. Can you imagine where we're at on those things? What we're going to be advertising is the two new elementary projects at hand. And if you remember, the five year plan workshop, we do have on deck the elementary school, our building. Right? As an alternate option in this, the reason we're doing that is because we're building, rebuilding. We believe that if we assign a manager for that, that that would be very cost effective. We have written it in such a way that we can stay with it, the same there. Or we can give ourselves some options, that's why they're not there. We just want to get that as an alternate out there to make sure, I mean, of course, the project is faring, has to be approved. We do have a little bit of ways to go, but we do need to get mine in at Construction Manager so we can start our business process and get everything going in our elementary school. So I'm asking permission to advertise as to obtain select proposals for Construction Manager as Contractor for the above projects that which will be due in our office on or before November 4th, 2022. And an evaluation will be conducted. We will put a separate team. The team will understand the instructions of how that works and we will, I think that's all that. We do have two days to do that and we plan on naming this manager by November 15th. All bidders must contact our architect of record, which is Sir Jamie Lake. We are not allowed to contact those that are listed. As members will be evaluated, they must go through him. And he will answer those questions, anything that's retained in the school. He needs to know, you contact superintendent, the directors, it's been on the top of the question. So mostly probably distracted later than he would be able to answer. So it is my request, my respectful request, that the board allow us permission to go ahead and advertise for a C M C Construction Manager as Contractor for the two new elementary school, elementary school part for that.
We're going to have a motion for permission to advertise C M C for the new elementary projects.
Mr. President, move that we give permission to advertise for C M C for the elementary projects.
Thank you, Ms. Perkins. Do I have a second? A second. Thank you, Mr. Freeman. Are there any questions or concerns?
Yeah, I'm looking at the difference between the new Parkwood Elementary and the, what I want to call it, New Wilson, the elementary school in Jeffersonville. They're the same price, they get the square footage is pretty, it's like 10 dollars per feet. And I was wondering, is that because of that project is going to be at a later date and because?
Being Parkwood, you said?
Excuse me, Parkwood.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, so we're just doing an estimated guess on what that is going to be this week. We do have, you know, roughly the funds that we committed to that. So I can't say what this work which actually is going to be at that time today. But we can do that general pricing because of the two types of elementary sections that we need based on those two different areas, one of the refills of Charlestown and one of the jumps. Taking that hidden information and adding the architects of record recording that, knowing what the preferences are with inside the needs of that building, they're all going to be very similar. So that way they can give us a projected estimated price at this time, which is what we had to do in the beginning. But once the manager takes over, they actually conduct the biz and we will know exactly.
And we're really trying to hedge against any future inflation in case. Because one of the things we've run into the last two years on pretty much every project is they run over budget. You know, and we don't want to get in that situation with that. You know, but in terms of the difference between each elementary, the, you know, in the plan, the Charlestown Elementary is a seven section elementary. The Wilson Elementary, property elementary is a six section elementary. Our proposal is that the parkwood property be a five section elementary, have a whole about 750 students. That's, you know, but. Yeah, like you, and probably like inflation probably been because they're both the same cost. Even though it was like one would be roughly eight years later. We want to make 1,000 square feet less. That's why.
Because that's been our biggest challenge with all these projects. But then not even just that, the thing that we're ordering, we're just staying a bracket and trying to stay out of that game this time. So when we do come to you for proposals on borrowing bodies, we are trying to be at that point to welcome that to begin. Hopefully, you know, I don't know, there are some things that are leveling out on this area. They'll just go, we're going low. But I think they're starting to level up. There's new things that are coming in that timing scheduling now is starting to affect certain things as well.
It is a moving target, I know, so.
Is there a reason we're bidding for a construction manager, not a general like contractor?
Yes.
Do you know the reason? You want like, yeah, yeah, do you want to share?
It's also what we did on the current projects that are going on with the same contract.
Okay.
So the enormous magnitude size of these elementary, the types of developments that you shall or should consider all of them that are out there. And we have used several in the district. And what we need here, where we have multiple things going on, so we're still going to have a lot of things going on with our patients. They now have an uncanny strength to conduct the proper biz, manage time. And I only have to then deal with one item, right? I pay architects that who has a lot of conversation about budgets with me to manage having to pay, you can imagine, all the things being put into a construction project. Woods, roofs, H E C, maintenance, to all plumbing, toilets, doors, carpet. For me to have to kind of do that, this magnitude work that's needed in the district. This is the best delivery cost method because when you're going to do two elementary, they're going to be able to bulk buy at a better price for the district. They also have a team and it takes quite a bit of a team. In our district alone, just with what we've done thus far, you know, we have like, what price? Five guys that are particularly devoted to this, no matter what it is. So there's no steps missed. And, you know, a lot of conversation through Jamie delivered to me on, on here's what, you know, the folks are wanting to what the cost is and keeping everybody at a time. They update us with construction projects, timing. It is, it is well worth its weight in gold because I've done several. And this is probably the worst thing I've ever felt. They also know what to stay, what remains to stay financially, which is our biggest challenge. know what to stay, what makes the stay financially, which is our biggest challenge because of these forms. So definitely keep us in line with that. And whatever is an issue where things are more expensive, it's a hundred times. You know, we don't just do it and say, well, by the way, you owe us. You know, that doesn't work well, we understand. So this team happens to work very well with my personality, Jamie already knows, and she pointed out several times that I didn't know ahead of time, in order to make sure this district is moving forward financially in these projects. So it's been a big challenge. We've met the battle challenge thus far, so we want to continue that.
Perfect. Any other questions, comments? Okay, all those in favor of the approval permission to advertise CMC for the elementary projects, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Obstaining. Next would be design bill contractor to HHS locker room.
Let me replay what we're talking right now at this point about Charlestown High School. Attached to the agreement with Core Construction Group as the design builder for the project outlined in the 2020 project for the CHS football locker room. Core Construction was the second highest score in bidder during the selection process. The company that won the original bid on the CHS has withdrawn from the project. District will engage with Core Construction Group as the provider. The previous provider will not be providing design build services for the CHS football locker room. Completion time will be determined and will be brought to the board at later date. We will have four, what, updates on how they will tackle that. Superintendent and I respectfully reiterate that the board of trustees approves the design build contract between Greater Park County Schools and Core. To go back to what I said about CMC versus other delivery methods, this is how we must proceed when someone withdraws, we go to the next bidder. And because it was to advertise as a design builder, we will continue that. There's nothing wrong with design building once you get that impression. I'm okay with that. That's how it was bid and that's how we must move forward. I respectfully.
Board of directors, we approve the design build contract between Greater Park County Schools and Core for the Charlestown project. Thank you, Mr. Jones. Do we have any questions, comments? Okay, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Obstaining. The next would be the 2022-23 general obligation bond resolutions.
Thank you, Mr. President. It is well known, I made it well known, that we have a lot of issues within the district. We're in lack of attention to our buildings. We have a lot and it's too late to back it. So we still have to continue on. We don't want to commit to all this, this hard work. We may, and we want to keep our buildings now being caught up so we can continue to maintain them on par or schedule. So we requested this bond cover plumbing issues, sewer drainage equipment, HVAC, roofing, paving, excavating, site preparation, tennis building. Our operations fund cannot handle these necessary repairs by appropriation or by cash. The amount being requested is 19.9, as I explained in the 23 budget presentation. You'll recall, I prepare the debt service fund to handle the next bonded projects with general obligation request. Therefore, no impact on the commitment of the tax rate of $110, being Wilburian as a dollar ten. The 1028 hearing was conducted this evening. There was no other comment. Therefore, I respectfully am requesting that the board approve the following three resolutions. The 1028 project resolution, the additional appropriation resolution, and the final bond resolution, I still recommend.
We're going, excuse me, pardon. Do I have a motion for the 1028 project resolution, additional appropriation resolution, and the final bond resolution?
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Do I have a second?
Thank you, Ms. Perkins. We've been through this a bunch. Any comments, questions? Okay, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Obstaining. The next item, cost endowment for S or HVAC projects. Oh, this is going to be good. I can tell.
So we're asking this district to get asset funds, uh, for the government. And preservation, you know, when you were awarded these, what to do with these funds, the recommendation was to repair your air quality HVAC and you did conduct and approve the contract with your facilities management team, which is perfection. That was an eight million dollar project. And as we all know, we are now getting into where those are the some of the products that those prices have increased. We have been able to oblige that eight million out of asset, that's one bucket, right? I need to make up about $600,000, eight million dollars to cover a lot of ground inside this district. So we're very thankful for that. But we do have to recognize these unprecedented prices. So I would be asking that the board approve the increase to this section of projects that were related to those eight million dollar asset projects, to the $2600,000, which will be supported by the general obligation of true. So again, going ahead of time and how to plan for that, it gave us an opportunity as the financial planners to be ready for that. So it is my recommendation that the board engages with perfection and, you know, pay the $600,000 adjustments. Now, actually it was about a $545,000, but at the time, knowing was I had to oblige $600,000.
Board, do I have a motion for the approval of the endowment for the asset HVAC project to be supported by the general bond?
Mr. President, I approve the costed asset HVAC projects.
Thank you, Mr. Paul. Do I have a second?
I'll say it.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Any questions, your comments?
Okay, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Obstaining. We will move right along to the roofing project, the new elementary, perfections 2022.
So you know, with our facilities management team, part of their obligation is to cost it. I'm trying to ask you for this morning, right? But they, part of that cost reduction that they're, that we are seeing in cash balances in our operations fund is because very distinctly in the agreement is that they take ownership of our equipment, preventative maintenance, our roofing and warranties, and they're very particular on, you know, making sure that what we get is good quality product. Of course they would because they would want to make sure that it costs us and it's not going to cost them if they were taking that over. We have made a commitment to at least get a school done. You know, we're down with them all because they all need work. So we're giving again of having unit of, and so your judgment with that is due for its rule. And so we should put this roof on with the front panels, a facade, all of that to be a full lula. And you will have, you know, your parking lot done, your new addition, all your interiors, your flooring, all those things, and the new roof done on the outside. So perfection has conducted those bids and has received the proper bidding tools and has provided that information to those that will be installing. And they will make sure that has a good preventative and warranty, which is very outstanding. That cost is at a maximum price guarantee of 2.566848 and will be supported by the general obligation. And as my recommendation of the board begins in this contract agreement.
Board of directors, we approve the new exterior renovation project. The scope of the replacement exterior wall panels is included in budget in our general obligation bond. Can I please have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Patrick, do I have any questions or comments?
I have a comment. I know that probably our public footman doesn't think that all they're doing is spending money, spending money, spending money, spending money. But I've been on the board over 10 years and we have, we've put Band-Aids on a lot of things and we're paying for that now. And I think we're, I know we're giving in the right direction with our plans. And it's great that we've got, we always could have one school that died.
Pretty don't be many more there. They don't start getting that quick. And, you know, as far as Band-Aids, you know, that does, then that can happen for, as long as the kid is for short term to allow financially that to plan for, okay, if we do this, when can we repair this? So as long as we know what that is, and that's why I have facilities management team, you know, we have in this bond that's coming up, all the needs for additional pay for example. And so we only have a lot of certain amount of money. And so they work with me on the priority on that. And so, and even input on, on, you know, when people come to you and say, I've seen a carfall, you know, we've had, we've had a lot of discussion. So then I then interject in and say, I know this is an understanding to look at this versus this and tell me which one we can do first. This is why we have a general obligation plan to do that. This is why we have a research plan to accommodate all that. You know, and it's the most responsible way to do it. I wish I could borrow all the money, get it all at once. But, you know, you just, people aren't available to do that. I mean, your companies can, you know, give all the funds, you know, there has to be a schedule. So when you're working with facilities management teams to do that, they're constantly monitoring that. And they're constantly reporting that to me, same with our roofing, same with our showers, same with all the other HVAC, plumbing, electrical, all of those things. That's how I know where we're staying all the time. Then you work with your five representatives on what that plan is. So that way they make sure they get what I do. And if that's all enough, there's a meeting emergency quicker than what we thought, they can fit that in for me. So it's a big, it's a big orchestration. It's a big orchestration.
And I think we need to reiterate, you know, because you have a thought of what we're spending a lot of money, you know, that we're pushing forward with our original plan from a few years ago that committed to that $110 tax rate, committed that we would do these projects and get our facilities fixed the way they should be fixed. But also with that being said, you know, when we were, you know, announcing that plan and having community meetings, going out and sharing that with the community, we clearly stated that if, if something happens with assessed value thing, slow down, we start losing assessed value, that maybe that five-year plan becomes a six or seven-year plan. We start stretching it out. We're committed to that $110 tax rate. We're going to keep doing these projects. And I think people need to understand that. You know, yes, the economy's not in great shape right now, but if we see a change, and we're taking our guidance from math and policy analytics and Stiefel, you know, looking at assessed value all the time and making sure that we can hit that tax rate. And, and they've assured us that we're fine moving forward. Until they tell us, you better slow down or you're going to have to increase the tax rate, we're going to keep going. You know, when they tell us, you need to start being careful because of what's going on in the economy with assessed value, that's when we'll, we'll slow down. You know, and so I can just make that clear to everybody in the community.
Right. We had to do some painful things during that time, some decisions that are difficult for all of us to make, but it's paying off now and we'll be able to. I appreciate our, how we've done, keeping us, keeping our funds growing, not having to end up a bit driven. Just creating more money, aren't you?
Yes, because she was not there.
Yeah.
Well, I'm just grateful that the teams that we have assembled around us are, actually feel like they're part of us. And, you know, our perfection, our financial people, they're, they're, they're giving us the right advice. And we, again, we're not stomping the gas pedal on the floor, but we sure are in 50 years. And we're going to do what we have to do until assessed values tell us otherwise. So I just want to thank all of you for the hard work you've done. You obviously are marketing and administrative team. It's great. So that being said, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Those abstaining? Next would be the resolutions adopting the 2023 budget.
Oh, by the way, probably one of the most important things that the board has to do. So, you know, you're giving accolades to the administration and your, and your team as partners with the board to make sure that they become the real function. It's that Larry is the board of trustees for school district is to conduct several painful discussions, a lot meetings, and listening to me talk about finance. And it is your superintendent's favor. Anyhow, this is probably one of the most important things. I want to congratulate you for getting you here, understanding clearly how school finance works, and making sure that you understand the decisions that you make tonight, tomorrow, and so on affect every, everything. All of them being hatched together. And we start this process 18 months. We have to do an 18-month evaluation, right, to, we're looking at where a large scale. That takes all of these things that we talked about into consideration. Also making a commitment that we're fulfilling the obligation of the $110 and money in the classroom. So we're working on very intensely with our teachers union on that and our other payers too. So we're always constantly thinking, how can we do that? How do we ensure it's successful? So that's been, you follow that all the way through this process. So tonight, I come before the board, we're in the position now to adopt the 2023 budget, which will require you to do five resolutions. From this point, I send it to the Department of Local Government Finance, who is the be all blessing, that's the state level. They will take an evaluation. Do you want to advertise that $110? It'd be something worth it. Great. Which you know that I bring back down to a dollar ten. Two things that do that, your assessed value, advertise high enough. So that way I can adjust in your debt service fund to get it to the dollar ten. So we can handle it. So to board tonight, I recommend that the board approve the 23 bus replacement plan, the 23 capital projects plan, the 23 resolution to establish transfers of funding from the education to the operations fund. Did you guys have been educated on that? The 22 resolution to reduce appropriations. I remember when we talked about rainy day, when I put a dollar bid here in there, just got cash flow, spend the money. I have to reduce that. So that way I can expect to the next year. And finally, the 23 appropriation and tax rate resolution for the budget. I do still recommend that the board make some of these resolutions.
Board, do I have a motion for the approval of these five resolutions for the 2023 budget that we reviewed them on the OJF?
Mr. President, we approve the resolutions adopting the 2023 budget.
Thank you, Ms. Paul. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Freeman. Any questions or comments about those?
No.
No. Okay, no comments? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Obstaining.
Congratulations, board. Thank you.
Thank you. Next would be more comments. Do you gentlemen, if you'd like to share with group?
I have.
Mr. Paul. I'm just glad to have our superintendent back. I'm on the end and, no, it was not me who said you were a man.
Mr. Freeman?
No. No, thank you.
Board, do I?
I'm just happy to be back after having surgery and being down before. Happy to be out and moving.
I kind of wish Kim could have been here.
No big deal.
She would have talked as much. She's great.
I want to talk for a minute or so. I would want to let everybody know, the board knows that Monday night is food fest in downtown. A greater park along with perfections. I want to open into it. Airmark, a BLS service will often be down there. Have some candy to eat with your doctors.
Nice.
So if anybody wants to come down and check this out, we have a pretty big group over there. So we're looking forward to it.
I'm taking a little jury.
There you go. And we'll be a colorful group. Yes, we got, yes, yeah. The admin building team here that's coming down there, we have a little magic outfit.
Oh, nice.
We have, we're gonna jerk this kids.
Nice, cool. Thank you, board.
I'm going to the Freeman's house because they give out full-size candy bars.
I'm sending a draft school messenger.
What do I have a motion for?
I'm here.
Uh, second. Any questions? If I have a motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Say aye.
For yours?